Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to the Charter Township of Oxford Planning Commission Regular Meeting for today, November thirteenth, two thousand and twenty-five. And I am chairing the meeting tonight, so you may find some mistakes, other things going on, since this is my first time at doing it. But we gave Corey Bailey a few days off, and so you're stuck with me. So let's start out by calling the meeting to order, which we've already done. And now let's stand and give our respects to the flag.
Flag allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. To the Republic, which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, infinite, and ever new.
Okay, can we get a roll call of members, please?
Austin?
Yes.
Vlosik?
Oh, yeah, here. My last name was quite pronounced correctly. Let's look.
Oh, sorry, is it Vlosik?
Vlosik.
Vlosik, my apologies. Plague of ships?
Here.
Here.
Wagner?
Here.
Turner.
Here.
We have a quorum.
Okay. Next item would be to approve the agenda for tonight.
Motion to approve the agenda?
Second.
Second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Next item there is conflicts of interest or ex parte contact. Anybody have any comments, anything we need to cover there?
No.
No.
Okay, very good. All right, approval of the minutes from the Planning Commission Regular Meeting of October twenty-third.
Motion.
Twenty-five.
Motion to approve minutes, Planning Commission Regular Meeting, October twenty-three, two thousand and twenty-five.
Second.
Okay, we have a second. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Okay. Next item here is public comment on any item not scheduled for a public hearing on this agenda. Now, to do that, we ask that you take no longer than three minutes. Start out with your name, your address, and your subject, and up to three minutes of time. And then if you haven't covered everything, if you would wait until the very last person has completed their comments, you can come back and speak again. So with that, do we have anybody that has any comments tonight from the floor? Come up to the mic, if you will, please. State your name, address.
Brian Floyd, eleven West Bay Shore, Oxford.
Okay.
Oxford Township. Is this the right forum to provide feedback for this all the that's supposed to be in the works? Okay. My issue with it is, one, you know, I'm concerned about my own property value if I had a store like that so close to the entrance to the subdivision of Waterstone. Second would be the modification to the entrance to accommodate that. Third would be, we already see a lot of traffic cutting through Waterstone to avoid making a left turn downtown. I believe building that in that location would increase that amount of traffic cutting through the neighborhood to avoid, you know, cutting through towns. And just general traffic overall in the areas are getting heavy with McLaren, you know, new things around that area, but I think this will make it much worse. And just, you know, that's my concern with it.
Okay.
I realize you want to do something with the land there probably, but I'm not sure a big box store like that is what people around here want. Maybe people cutting through from here at work want that, but I don't think people in the immediate area, if they said anything at all, probably wouldn't want that, in my opinion.
Okay, if there's no one else, we'll move on to the commissioners' comments. Any of you have anything you'd like to?
Not as of now.
Okay.
Nope.
I'm good. Thank you.
Good. All right, item nine on the agenda has to do with petition PC twenty-three double oh five. The petitioner is Trigent Crest Three LLC, thirty-four hundred East Lafayette in Detroit. before we go any further, we'll just make a few comments about rules of discussion, things that way, for public testimony. Any members of the public wishing to address the commission during the public hearing should give their name, address, position, and the issue they want to talk about. The general public shall limit their remarks to three minutes, and we've got a timer here that will go off when your three minutes are up. No person shall be permitted to speak twice on the same issue until everyone is to be heard, has had a chance to speak. Persons will only be recognized a second time if they have something new to add that hasn't already been brought to the commission's attention. No person other than a commission member, township consultant, or township staff shall be allowed to address an issue for public hearing following the closing of the public hearing by the chair. Okay, do we have anybody else that wants to speak at this point? All right, moving on then to our public hearing motion. Need to have a motion to open the public hearing?
So motion to open the public hearing?
A second.
Okay, we have a second.
A second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, we do have some order for the public hearing. We'll just run through this quickly. The order presentation shall be as follow. One, the presentation by the planner, and that's Mateo here. The next presentation is by the presenter, whomever you wish to speak.
About Mr. Turner? Jim would just go after me. Jim would have, Jim would go after me.
Well.
My apologies, that's the word I got on him.
We'll get Jim in there sometime, we'll keep him awake.
Let me know.
We will do that. All right, public hearing testimony, we've already talked about that, and we will close the public hearing. And comments from the township consultant and staff can be referred to. We'll review any open correspondence that have come in. Do you know if you've seen anything?
Other than my name.
At some point then, we'll need a motion. We'll discuss the motion, and we'll end up with a vote on going forward with this plan. So with that in mind, Mateo, we'll let you go first, but you only get a minute and a half.
Yeah, that's fine.
All right. All right, good evening. With the help of SLACO, Carlyle Orderment Associates, we are the bank consultants for the township. So as Mr. Turner had identified, what you have in front of you tonight is the request for final site plan approval for a residential planned unit development. I have my notes. Obviously, this is a project that has spanned over almost two years. One and a half years ago is when we were looking at the preliminary. I know we have some new planning commissioners since that time. You know, we've worked hard to kind of build the storyline from preliminary all the way to today. So I'm going to attempt to thread a needle through my presentation, kind of merging the past with the present. But when I'm done, if you have any questions, if there's anything that needs clarity, whatever it may be, you know, feel free to ask, and we'll figure it out. So again, Trigent Crest Homes, the Third LLC is requesting final site plan approval for a new residential planning development located at the corner of East Drainer Road and Oxford Lake Road. If you give me a minute, I'll kind of shoot to a basic overlay of the site plan. So the site is one hundred and forty-four point nine net acres and encompasses Tullamore Lake while bordering Mud and Ploss Lakes to the north. The project is proposing sixty-two single-family detached and one hundred and four single-family detached units within one condominium development. Units will be a for-sale product. All units provide flexible floor plans ranging from three to four bedrooms and two to four bathrooms. Two-story and ranch models are provided. Per PUD requirements, the conventional plan was provided at preliminary and is required to show that the site would be developed in the R one A zoning. So while this is a proposed PUD, the conventional plan that was required at preliminary and included in the finals here, essentially, when you do a PUD, the, it allows the developer to propose deviations from the underlying zone, and the return for that is that the development offers substantial benefits, which we'll get to further in my review. But just for reference, this is the conventional plan, so developed under R one A, which is our densest single-family, six thousand square foot lot zone. One hundred and seventy-three units would be possible, and those developments do not have an open space requirement like your PUD ordinance does. So some of the amenities that are offered in the project are pedestrian dock access provided to both lakes, the western portion of the site. Condominium documents indicate that motorized watercraft would not be allowed on Tullamore Lake. There is a pickleball court or sport court proposed at the Oxford Lake Road entrance, and there are pathways through the site that offer passive recreation. So to kind of backtrack a little bit through the history of the site, in April of two thousand and twenty-four, the preliminary plan was presented to the planning commission indicating the type of development being proposed, the waivers being requested from the base zoning R one A and the RP, RPUD standards, the substantial benefits for the site, what they were offering as far as substantial benefits for the site, the type of housing offered, and the passive recreation amenities that they were going to provide. After substantial presentations from township consultants and the applicant, as well as public comment, and applicant dialogue with the PC, the plan received conditional preliminary approval. Conditions centered around the site continuing to meet requirements to have offered a substantial benefit above and beyond what was possible with conventional zoning, full site control, contiguous land, and incorporating at least two superior design elements per your ordinance standards. Additional conditions related were related to using native landscaping, retention of existing trees to the greatest extent possible, quality architecture for the housing, and fulfilling any other requirements as noted in the consultant's reviews for the preliminary plan. In October of twenty-four, the applicant presented a modified layout to township staff as it related to the placement of several single-family housing units along the drive between Mud Lake and Tullamore Lake, and the swapping of three-unit and two-unit attached models. The result was more homes being moved to the south side of the road with the rear yard spacing Tullamore Lake as opposed to Mud Lake. And if you give me a minute, what I can show you here is, so this is the final plan that they are proposing this evening. This was the original plan at preliminary, and my apologies to kind of get the whole site and scope, it's a bit of a challenge, but essentially, what you can see here is that there's two units here, and then there's a row of units that kind of followed the drive that would have had their backyard spacing Mud Lake. What they modified to was what you have before you this evening, where now these two units are gone, the row has been shortened, and kind of the difference has been pushed down here. Now, the impetus for this change really came from the fact that prior to development on the site, there were several small scattered conservation easements throughout the land, and those easements are conservation easements, can't do anything with them. So the applicant knew this and knew that they would need to work with Eagle to rectify this. So in the process of working with Eagle to consolidate the conservation easements elsewhere on the site, it kind of fostered this change. Now, this change did net them two additional single-family units, so originally they were at sixty single-family units, and now they're up to sixty-two. But the slight increase in the two units, they're actually under what you could develop conventionally, and the fact that actually more homes now back up to the Tullamore Lake, which will be completely encompassed by the development. The township did not see this as a major amendment, so a major amendment would have had to come back to you in a new preliminary site plan. The township did not deem that as such. That does not mean that we approved it, it just meant that we were okay with this change coming to a final and not back to a preliminary stage. I'll make sure I'm on the right plan now. Okay. So with that, walking paths were also modified to be predominantly dead ends into viewing areas for the lakes previously, the walking paths weave between and behind housing units, which can be seen as less optimal. These changes resulted, again, in the two additional single-family detached units. The consolidation and increased size in the conservation easement areas resulted in, again, kind of the amending of the site plan. After, my apologies, I went ahead of my notes. So again, the township reviewed this, it's in front of you this evening, and I'm happy to answer questions about it. In September of two thousand and twenty-five this year, a final site plan application was submitted for review. After one revised and resubmit round, the application, as you see it tonight, was submitted and is ready for your review. Tonight, the PC or the planning commission is responsible for determining if the applicant has met the conditions of the preliminary approval and the standards of the RPUD ordinance. So with that, they, in looking and comparing the single-family site with the R one A zoning designation, from a lot standard and a setback standard, there's actually no major deviations that were requested for those lots. R one A has sixty-foot width lots, that's what they're proposing. They have a front setback of twenty-five feet, that's what they're proposing, side yards of seven and a half feet, rear yards of twenty feet, natural feature setback of twenty-five feet. There's no deviations in the single-family. These are essentially what R one A lots would look like. And for the building heights, again, it's still thirty-five feet and two stories. So from a single-family development perspective, there are no major deviations from R one A. As we talk about natural features from the site, land improvements have commenced on the property. As noted earlier, the conservation easements have been consolidated primarily and have been increased actually from fifteen acres to forty-five acres. So again, when I spoke earlier about these scattered conservation easements, if you tallied it all up, it was about fifteen acres, but in half-acre, one-acre, three-acre chunks throughout the site, now they've been consolidated into two or three large conservation areas that equal forty-five acres in conservation. And just, the benefit there is that it's conservation, you cannot do anything in them. And so in perpetuity, if anyone wanted to modify anything associated in those areas, they would have to go through Eagle, and that is not, that is not an easy process, nor is it guaranteed any kind of approval from the state that they'd be allowed to do so. A woodland report was off, was provided in the final site plan, it's dated April seventeenth, two thousand and twenty-four. It indicates the woodland areas along the portions of the site that border Ploss, Mud, and Tullamore Lake, and showed that those areas would be preserved. It did also kind of offer information on where invasive species had taken over and where certain mature trees would be retained on the site. Staff did work with the applicant on crafting language that spoke to the Condominiums Association's responsibility for maintaining Lake Tullamore or the health of Lake Tullamore. Those are included in the master declaration documents that were included in your legal council packet this evening. Circulation for the site really hasn't changed, there's still two access points, one at Oxford Lake, Oxford Lake Road to the north, and then one along Boulevard and Interest at East Drainer to the south. The roads are the right-of-way throughout the development, are fifty feet wide, there's five-foot wide sidewalks shown throughout the development, and then the emergency access road off to the east. So originally, it was a twenty-foot gravel road that's been improved to asphalt, which was at the pleasure of the fire department. They are showing safety paths along East Drainer, all the way from the Oxford Lake Road intersection all the way up to the existing four homes along East Drainer. Tonight, they are requesting, they've gone in front of the safety path, and now they're filing for planning commission requesting a waiver from having to install the safety path along this frontage on East Drainer. They're also requesting a waiver from a lieu of payment. There is a mechanism in the ordinance to request that if there are geographic challenges with the site. The border, the property line runs so tight to the lake's border, and that topography there is so steep that essentially installing the safety path and or making them, we'll talk about landscaping later, but making them landscape that area would, you could argue it does harm and it does good, and so they are, that is something the planning commission need to consider tonight, is waiving required for the safety path along this portion of East Drainer Road. For site utilities, obviously Jim can go over that in more detail, but they do have, they are in the water sewer district, and they propose using stormwater treatment units prior to discharge into Tullamore Lake for stormwater and or detention ponds on site. For landscaping, let me bring up their plan. So landscaping spread between the two sheets. But if you've been to the site, you can see that the trees along Oxford Lake Drive have been retained and are, are to stay in place per part of the agreement. The woodland report included in the packet showed the areas that were going to be cleared and the areas that would be preserved. Each area provided a record of vegetation found in each section of the site, again, including invasive species, but also the mature trees to be retained. Again, including invasive species, but also the mature trees to be retained. The landscaping does comply with the order requirements applied to an RM housing, so again, this is PUD. You can kind of do some flexibility in there, but we utilize the RM landscaping standards for this portion of the site and they do comply with those standards. The applicant does not technically have frontage along Oxford Lake Road per a small strip of land between their property and the right-of-way itself, which would alleviate their requirement to put screening along that portion of the site. However, they have offered that with the account of sixty-eight new trees regardless of the requirement to do so. So, those are kind of the basic standards that we would go through. The next part of my review, we're gonna kind of revisit the PUD waivers that were granted. They are not requesting any new waivers this evening. The waivers that are on the site plan were granted as part of preliminary, but I'm just kind of recap those real quick and then, well, maybe not real quick. And then we could get to questions. So, so PUDs must, they must meet certain criteria to be eligible for consideration. During the preliminary site plan interview, the planning commission did determine these criteria were met or could be met through conditional approval. The first one in your ordinance is a recognizable and substantial benefit to both of the end-users and the overall community beyond what would be realized in an R1A development. The applicant provided information talking about reclaiming the old gravel pit into a lakefront community, providing a mix of attached and detached housing units. Providing thirty-three percent, thirty-three point four percent open space, which is more than the twenty-five percent minimum requirement. Developing the property with a hundred and sixty-six units, which would be less than the hundred and seventy-three hundred R1A. Your PUD ordinance and most PUD ordinances offer what's called a density bonus, meaning if they really, they really meet all the standards, you can actually allow them to develop the site at a higher density. At no point were requesting that, but had they have been requesting that, they could have requested up to two hundred and seven units on the site. They speak to preserving woods and desirable natural features and removing invasive and undesirable species. Planting native species throughout the development and improving East Road, East Drainer Road pursuant to the RCO, RCOC approved plans. So, in our observation of this Carlisle apartment, we note that the mix of housing does cater to separate but important demographics with both kind of a younger professional, but then an aging in-place population. The project does offer thirty-three point four percent open space over the twenty-five percent minimum. The conservation areas being increased is big from the perspective of that land was gonna be open regardless. It's not to say that, you know, all of a sudden they made new land that they're gonna preserve. They're just dedicating more open space to conservation. And open spaces does not necessarily mean conservation. There are ways to develop within open space, but conservation easements you cannot. So, we did cite that as a benefit, but that going from fifteen acres to consolidated forty-five acres was, you know, was a substantial benefit. And amenities included were lake viewing areas and recreation courts. Again, initially the paths kind of weaved between units. We have found in the past that sometimes that's a bit of a challenge to privacy and/or owner's perceptions about backyard rights and things of that nature. Now, most of the trails just dead-end into viewing areas, which we saw as optimal. While we do, while we do admit that, you know, reclaiming the site, improving the site from a land perspective and implementing improvements to East Drainer Road per RCOC requirements is an improvement for the development. It is something they would have been required to do under R1A. So, we don't put as much weight on those statements just because by zoning standards, they would have had to do that anyways. But again, the stuff cited earlier were what we recorded as substantial benefits to the site. Another requirement is unified control. Essentially, the site and/or sites have to be owned and operated by one property owner and developed by such, which is tried in this case. The land has to be contiguous. This is really just to ensure that we don't have some development that's got three acres between it and three acres below it and so on and so forth. They meet that requirement. The last category of requirements is superior design. At least two superior design elements outlined in section fourteen eight C shall be provided. So, the applicant's response to this was that their landscaping utilizes native species and provides buffer zones. Fifty-foot wide roads were utilized to offer more green space. Typically, a road is sixty, has a sixty-foot right-of-way, they're proposing fifty. So, we noted that the use of native and non-invasive species and the maintenance of woodland buffers and land dedicated conservation easements kind of were in line with their landscaping statements. Their mix of units between attached and detached single-family units was another design element that they cited. You do not have a zoning district in Oxford Township that allows for these two types of units to be on one site. It's either R1A or some form of RM. Again, given that these kind of cater to two different, two different demographics that are in demand. If I find another D word, I will. We kind of noted that as a benefit. You couldn't develop this under conventional zoning. And then architectural details include housing units that complement each other in surrounding developments as well as utilize equal materials like brick and various forms of siding. So, we noted that the facades of all the units are predominantly shake siding, brick veneer and synthetic stone. Some units offer faux vented gables or active dormers depending on whether a second floor is option. Sides and rear elevations are predominantly horizontal siding, but do offer brick veneer around the base of every unit. Open space is provided throughout the development. Again, if this was R1A, then open space would not be a requirement. They could offer it, but they wouldn't have to by zoning requirements. So, whenever we, whenever we consider a PUD, a PUD development agreement has to be crafted as well. And this is kind of where the waivers are put in writing, along with other, other requirements for the development that are an agreement between the applicant and the township on how the sites to be developed per the site plan. So, the requested waivers and modifications, as I said, are required to be incorporated into the development agreement. In our review, we did provide a table that outlined the waivers and modifications associated with the project. No new waivers or modifications are being requested. However, we do offer the following recap for the final review for the planning commission. The waiver for the one-hundred-foot buffer between units and property lines around the perimeter, that waiver has not been modified. It does require some amending. Should the planning commission approve the site plan, we will need to reference that when they added the two units and moved some units around, the numbering of the units themselves changed. So, they didn't change the level of waiver they needed, it's just the numbers associated with specific units changed. So, if we do approve this evening, we will need to amend that in the motion. But that standard is essentially indicating that PUD, PUD developments are to have a hundred-foot buffer between the property line and the improvement itself. The waiver was granted for the units along here, these units here, and then these single-family units along here. The waiver from requiring a landscaped boulevard entrance at Oxford Lake Road. So, our PUDs are supposed to have boulevard entrances. The entrance for Oxford Lake Road was waived. There were some cited issues with how wide the right-of-way was going to be and how it was going to tie in with the intersection across the street. The waiver from installing landscape island cul-de-sacs for the fire department's concerns. So, in your ordinance, these cul-de-sacs would have required landscape islands. This is not the first time the fire departments expressed concerns with that. They can cause issues for navigating the trucks. Obviously, if the fire department has to get somewhere, it will, and if it has to drive over something, it will. But then there becomes a conversation about who's going to repair that, who's responsible for it, so on and so forth. So, the fire department did request that those were removed and the planning commission did re-apply preliminary. The waiver to allow areas that have less than a hundred feet between residential units to be considered open space. So, in your ordinance, there is language about the distance between these units would need to be a hundred feet to be considered open space. Again, that layout didn't change from preliminary, so this area can count towards that thirty-three four point four percent open space that they're proposing. That was waived at preliminary. Waiver from landscaping along Oxford Lake Road and East Drainer, east of the four existing homes. So, again, that was our conversation earlier about the safety path down there. It's the same way we requested the landscaping. To get in there and improve the land and plant forty evergreen trees would do more damage than just leaving it as it is. And then, as I had mentioned earlier, it's really more or less a waiver they didn't have to request, but for clarity, it was out there. Again, per this strip of land and you'd never be able to see it. And it, you know, it's a very thin strip of land that is technically another parcel that doesn't, that means that they do not have frontage on Oxford Road, that portion. However, the landscaping, the land, planning commission still granted a waiver from any landscaping having to go along that stretch. That being said, they have provided buffers in that area regardless. And then the waiver to allow road whiffs and cul-de-sac dimensions as shown in the site plan. So, again, your standard in our ordinance is sixty-foot right-of-ways, but the PUD ordinance does allow for a request to do fifty. They requested the planning commission grant it. So, with that, that is just a recap of the project itself. At the end of our review, we just cited that, again, the planning commission would need to consider whether or not they would recommend a waiver to the township board for the safety path construction and the in lieu of payment that would be required. Beyond that, parcels need to be combined. The parcels need to be combined before the final CFOs are offered out to the properties. We've been in contact with the applicant about that. The condominium draft documents are part of your packet this evening and the planning commission needs to approve along with the site plan should they grant approval. And then last but not least, again, we need to, if, if approval is granted by the planning commission, we need to amend the units that were granted at one-hundred-foot setback. So, with that, I'm happy to take any questions. I'll have the planning commission here.
Okay. The lot sizes for the attached single-family homes, do you have any idea what those, what those lot sizes are?
So, those are not actually defined as lots, the attached units. That would almost kind of be considered like a site condo.
Okay.
So, excuse me. So, like with your RM developments, you know, we wouldn't have one lot dedicated to or three plaques or a few plaques.
I see, I see, okay.
Anybody else have any questions from the tail?
No.
Good.
Yeah.
Go ahead.
Sorry, good evening.
Good evening.
Can we talk about this strip of land real quick? It was top of discussion along Gillespie there?
This side, yeah.
I'm sorry, Oxford Lake Drive. The underneath there? That strip of land, is there a right-of-way there that allows that road to go through there? What's, what's the, what allows that to happen?
Yeah, so, I, I can't tell you how or why and I can actually, well, I might be able to show you, but yeah, so this, it exists here and it exists here, but there was room left in that, in that strip of land for a road to connect to. And it must have been done with some sort of conscience because it lines up with Gillespie Street.
Okay.
So, it must have been foreseen at some point kind of that a road would be there. But yes, there is, there is a gap in that strip of land where they do have just that amount of frontage to get that a little through.
Okay. I know that was a hot topic a year and a half ago.
Yeah. We were here for four hours. There were a lot of hot topics.
Right. The safety path on Drainer, can you zoom in on a little bit?
Yeah.
I was looking at the strip here and how it's sort of dead ends at the person's or right near there, what appears to be their driveway. I'm just, I'm concerned, does that really make sense to do that? We're not extending it further down Drainer. And if I were that property owner, probably wouldn't want a path to stop right at my driveway because it sort of introduces traffic that was never there before, pedestrian traffic.
Yeah, and I feel like, I feel like there's been conversation, I'll let the applicant address it when they come up to this, but working, yes, figuring something out for that maybe makes a little bit more sense or prepares maybe for one day a crossing of Drainer. I think is definitely able to accommodate.
Okay, thank you. Few more questions? That's okay. Let's see, the conservation easement, you were saying that nothing can be built in that property. When the conservation easement, it was reset or set after preliminary site plan, is that correct?
Yeah, so at preliminary, the conservation easements were still kind of scattered throughout the site. And that was a part of a condition of approval that they needed to rectify that with Eagle before they could come back for final.
So, when I look at the, the new conservation easement, which appears to follow the silt fence line that's on the soil erosion plan.
Okay.
Because it appears that, and help me if it doesn't, because that's my reference really.
It's shown here, I mean, it's shown here too. Conservation easement.
Right.
I'm listening. I didn't mean to cut you off.
No, no, you're good. In particular, can you zoom, go up there a little bit to that side of the road? With those lots that, those sites that were removed and where the property line is from.
Through here.
Right in that area, right.
Yeah.
Yeah, right here. So, in the conventional plan, you wouldn't be able to build homes there, would you? If, if there's a conservation easement that's defined and you can't build in it, you can't build anything in it.
Correct.
It doesn't appear that the conventional plan that's shown in front of us on the packet reflects that. There's homes on, right, cutting right through the middle of that.
Let me go over that.
And maybe I'm reading it wrong, but that's what I noticed and I wanted to ask about that.
These two guys?
Right. And that, that's just one example that I, I saw. I didn't dig into it too much further than that. But based on what I see, the conservation easement now, it cuts right through those two houses. So, it, I'm having a hard time understanding, is this really the actual count that the conventional plan would have if those homes can't exist there?
So, I would, I guess the conventional plan can kind of be developed in a, I'm not gonna call it a loose manner, but it can take some, some assumptions in that if they were.
I understand that.
Okay, yeah. So, if, if the assumption was with the conventional plan that those easements would be rectified some way or in a different manner or alleviated completely, then this would be a legitimate conventional plan there.
The concern I have is we're, we're talking about there could potentially put two hundred and seven units, right? That was a discussion point.
If they went for a density bonus with the, with the PUD.
Right.
Yeah.
And then, there was discussion before that there could be, I don't know what different number was, a hundred and sixty, a hundred and seventy-three, I think was the number.
Under, under R1A.
Under R1A for this conventional plan. But if those two homes as an example can't really be built there, that number isn't one seventy-three, it's one seventy, one seventy-one if they can't be built, right?
Yeah, I mean, you could make an argument that there's a handful of these that could not be developed the way the conservation easements are laid out now. But we're, I guess we're comparing past knowledge to current knowledge.
Right, I'm just, it's, what I'm hearing, you know, reached through some of this discussion is that, well, we could build this and it's a lot more dense and it's a lot more homes. And this other plan brings substantial benefit. I, I believe there is benefit to the plan. I'm, I'm looking at it and, you know, it's a difficult property to develop because of the contours and, and everything. But I just wanna make sure the information we're being provided is accurate so we can make an educated decision on what is real and what's not. And when I saw that, I thought, wait a second, is this really, is this conventional plan showing more homes to help us go a certain way in our decision-making because, well, you could get this or this.
Sure.
And, you know, right off the gate, you're looking at that going, well, if I notice that there, is there any other places on the plan that there could be a, that couldn't have been updated, so.
I will say for conventional plans, the ordinance does not require that a, and actually the state law does not require that like a full site plan be submitted for the conventional plan as well. So, when we do our reviews of a conventional plan to determine whether or not it's valid, it's very, it's very cursory in the essence of like, you know, are they, you know, if there was, if there was a documented like massive wetland of the Middle East here, we would be able to say, no, these units wouldn't count. If there was, you know, an old railroad easement that cut clean through the site, like, you know, we could kind of pick up our deck. The oddity with this site was the conservation easements that were on there without really any kind of rhyme or reason. And I'm not saying that's good or bad, we just could not figure out why there are all these spot easements on the site. For what we had to work with and what they were providing, we did determine that this was valid. I get the point that you're making, I just wanna make sure you understand that like, it's concert, conventional plans are not like full-bolt site plans. We would not put them through every single wringer of your standard. We would just look to say, okay, the lots that they're dimensioning are correct. The land that they're putting them on could, could sustain development, you know, however they, what are they presenting here?
Okay. So, I just, I'm concerned that, you know, should we even use those numbers that were mentioned? You know, we could get a hundred and seventy-three or two hundred and seven, but we're getting one sixty-four, is that the new number?
One sixty-six.
One sixty-six, okay. The old number was one sixty-four, right? One sixty-six, okay, the old number was one sixty-four, right?
Correct.
Okay, so I really want to just take those, those numbers and just try to forget about them for a second because it's really not, they may not be accurate.
Um, for the, for the amount of detail required for a conventional plan, it is, but I'm, but I'm telling you that with the acknowledgement that the amount of detail required for a conventional plan is not a site plan.
Fair enough. Um, just a few more questions left us up there. Let's see, the design elements, you talked about the design, it's one thing that we talked about a year and a half ago was that there was going to be this park provided as part of the access to the lake, public access.
Yeah.
And that was sort of a selling feature at the time. And I didn't, I don't, there's not discussion about that anymore and concerned, maybe the applicant or petitioner can speak to that more, what they plan to do with that for the benefit of the community. Is that appropriate or do you have information on that?
No, I think that's a fair point. So yeah, preliminary for the commissioners, this area was, and in conversations prior to application, the, the owner and developer had discussed maybe deeding this land over or donating it to the township as a, as kind of like a waterfront access park. I was, I was not necessarily involved in the conversation that took place afterwards, but I know that the township did discuss the matter with Parks and Rec, looked at it a few different ways, and ultimately Parks and Rec declined to accept the property as a park, citing some concerns with cost of maintenance liability, you know, any kind of improvements that the site would need. So that, that gets us to today where now instead this area is just part of the conservation easement and open space that they're providing at the site. What, what would be done with it from this point forward, I'll let him speak too.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
That's all I have to know.
Okay.
Check place, Jared, thank you.
Do you have some?
I am good.
Anybody else?
Okay.
Okay. Mr. Sheriff, looks like we will give you the floor.
Good evening, Jim Sheriff, Sheriff of Engineering, Township Engineering Consultant. The way that your process works, you go through your preliminary site plan, the applicant gets their approval, then we really make them dive in and do the design, do the hard design, go get all the permits and things like that. And then when they come back to you for a final site plan, all of this should be pretty clean, you know, from an engineering aspect, we'll call it. So you should be, I know that your letters, my letter is in your packet there, I just want to let you know that we have approved all the, the final engineering for the project itself. They have obtained their land improvement permit. They have the Eagle permits that Mateo's been discussing, the, in the, the stream of waters, the parts three oh one and three oh three permits. Just kind of running through everything here, we did have a couple minor comments, but basically the grading plans that were seen on this final site plan, mastery approved engineering plans, the sanitary sewer, there's capacity within the sewer system. And they're working through, that's the only permit that they do not have at this point is their sanitary sewer permit through Eagle. I think it's just going through the process, I don't think there'll be any hangups with it, but that's the only permit that they do not have with regards to the water. Again, there's ample water to supply this development here, and they do have their Eagle permit already for that. Stormwater, again, everything is going through either some pretreatment measures before it enters the lakes or into the, into the detention ponds. So they're meeting all of the stormwater requirements. As regards to some pavements, in those, they do have, as Mateo mentioned, the, the access drive for the fire. The type of pavement that they're doing, they're just doing, they could change it, but right now it's just asphalt with curb and gutter in there. That's all acceptable to us. They are making improvements out of Drainer Road for the road commission requirements, so now, I don't want to say it's going to eliminate everything that's happening there, but it's certainly going to help with the backups that occur. And really, that, that's it, other than the safety path waiver that Mateo mentioned, but from an engineering perspective, we are ninety-nine percent there, we're just waiting on that Eagle permit. And I guess really with that, I'll keep my presentation short and let you guys get to the real work, unless you have any questions for me.
Any questions for?
Question, drainage, coming off of the, can you zoom, would you mind, are you able to control it, Jim?
Yeah, yeah, thank you.
I think I saw a note in there somewhere about that pond that drains, does it drain to a ditch?
This one out here, right here in the corner?
Right.
Yes.
And then does that drain to the lake?
Um, I believe it actually drains the opposite direction, or actually I think it goes underneath Drainer Road and drains onto the, there's a wetland that is on the, on the golf course, on the opposite side of the road.
So the four neighbors there, the four houses?
They sit up real high, we put a water ring through there a couple of years ago, and I know that they're sitting up kind of at the peak and the wa, the drainage comes down the hill there and ends up on the par three golf course right along, or the par three hole right along Drainer Road. And other wetlands on the property and drains to the south.
So they shouldn't experience any issues with drainage?
No.
And changes?
Nope, and the road commission saw the proposed outlet and they approved the, the pipe that's coming out of the pond there.
Okay, thank you.
Anything else? Anybody else?
No.
I have another question, Mr. Chair. You, you stated something about master deeds and bylaws?
Yes.
Was there something missing there?
He stated it, but yeah, go ahead, I'm trying to answer, I saw him, yeah.
Says our comments from previous individuals remain, so can you address those comments, if you know what they are?
I think that at the time that we did our review, we were in the process of reviewing the, the language that was in there, and since that time, the applicant has submitted them to us. And everything, all of our comments have been addressed.
Okay, very good, just wanted to make that clear, thank you.
Okay. No more questions for them, we'll turn it over to the presenters. And you tell us where we've made mistakes.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the planning commission, my name is Kevin Coles, address is four one two hundred Coventry Road, Novi, Michigan, I'm the attorney for the developer. We have with us from the developer, Trident Crest, we have Niko Schultz in the second row here, Tom Turnbull in the front row. We also have the engineer for the project, Greg Bono from PEA Group, and Bob Tedesco, the builder for this community from Silverado Homes. We're pleased to be in front of you tonight, we've worked hard over the last eighteen months or so to address all of the conditions that were imposed on this preliminary site plan. And we've done that and we've brought back to you a final site plan that complies with all of the approval criteria that are in your PUD ordinance for approval as a PUD. And we asked tonight that you approve the final site plan, that you approve the open space agreement, which we call the master declaration, but it's the open space agreement for the development, that we've prepared in compliance with the PUD provisions of your zoning ordinance, and that you also recommend to the township board, as the safety path committee has already, the two waivers we've requested with respect to the safety path that's east of the fourth house, the Easterly House on Drainer Road. So that that safety path is waived and payment in lieu is also waived, among other things, it's impossible to put a path there technically. And the developer paid in lieu of the path that would go along most of this segment when the Woods of Telmore was built, the Trident Crest three also developed Woods of Telmore. So with that, we're happy to answer any questions you have and thank you for your consideration.
Dan, do you have some questions?
Well, the question would start with the park, that was, I, I,
The, the park, the park was a concept we brought to the township at preliminary. And in discussions with the township officials, we received direction that the park just didn't work in this location. That property's now been subjected to a conservation easement and will be open space for this community. It's, you know, it's usable land for the, for the community, but it's open space just for this community, the Telmore North community.
Then, then maybe, forgive me if I'm asking, Mr. Chair, is the appropriate, the right person, how do you control that? With that, how would you, how would it be controlled? The way that property's arranged with the roadway?
We, we are intending, our, our intent is to put in ballards along the road right-of-way in concert with the road commission to prevent vehicle pullovers in that location. And to limit, you know, people from riding down the road who like to fish from, you know, seeing a pond and pulling over, people do that. And that's one approach that we're intending on implementing here.
If, if it's a property line, could a fence be put up there?
I don't know that a fence can be put up there due to the, you know, configuration of the slopes, you know, the, the property, before the right-of-way ends, this, it's steep, it's a very steep slope down the, the lake.
Right.
Point steep, you know, there's just very limited land in that location.
Right, right. I just, if, you know, I guess, I'm concerned that if, you know, obviously the property owner has rights, I understand, and if a fence could be built there, that would be, I think from a visual standpoint, projectional to that community in that area, right?
Yeah.
And I guess I just want to figure out how that could be a, a benefit, or I should say not take away from what's currently there, I could see there's existing guard rail there that ends just before the park, and it sounds like you might be talking about extending that guard rail so that this, there's like a parking space or two, maybe you could squeeze a car or something there.
We're not intending any parking spaces to be available on our, on, on this development's land at all, we don't view this as a park.
No, I, I understand, but,
This is private land, it's for the benefit of the Telmore North community.
What, realize when we voted a month, a year and a half ago, that was proposed or provided as a benefit to the community. So that's, I'm trying to frame it in that way and now it's sort of being taken away.
But there's, this, there are substantial benefits from this development that we've articulated, that Mr. Pasalakwa reviewed, that exceed your ordinance requirements, and it was based on the direction of the township in our meeting with township officials. And as Mr. Pasalakwa said, you know, the park department didn't want this land, there's practical difficulties they encountered that they viewed that would be burdens to the township and problems to have a park here. The land's now conservation easement.
Is there a way to use the HOA's rules to allow that to happen, to maintain that property and allow access to?
Access to who, sir?
To the property, as originally stated.
By who?
You mean from the public?
By public, as originally stated.
No. There's no public access here. Our intent is that there be no public access here, it's not a public park, it's conservation easement that's part of this community.
Okay. That's all I have to know, thank you.
I have one quick question. From our notification, what would these road ballards look like?
They haven't been designed, but they would be, they would be typical ballards along a road and possibly an extension of the guardrail. Those are plans that we're contemplating that would be implemented after final, final site plan.
All right. I mean, would they just be round, big round metal stakes, would they be, be big boulders, you know?
No, no, Town Turnbull Swaby Real Estate Group, Trident Crest, three four would be slightly after Trident. What Kevin's describing, if you go out there, there is a guardrail that is pretty much along the very, very steep slope along the north side of Drainer Road. As the guardrail stops, there's a number of ballards that continue, then there's a break, there's no ballards. There's an opening there, people, they, they back boat trailers down there, and it's, it's kind of an attractive nuisance. The question from the commissioner that would we want, would the HOA want to welcome the public? We, we can't ask our HOA to take that responsibility, that liability for the public, same reason that the township didn't want that, that attractive nuisance in your liability. We will extend the ballards, that people aren't going to be driving and packing their small watercraft and dropping it in there. The ballards will be spaced such that you're not going to be able to do that. In time, if people aren't backing down there, that vegetation is going to recreate, it'll fill in. The, the places that the people in the HOA want to access the water, we put different access points into the lakes. And if they have kayaks or paddleboards, they'll be able to do it there. So recreational resource will still be available, just not from that location. But the ballards, if you look what's out there, we're just going to extend them, it's going to be much safer than it is today.
Okay.
I just, if you'll mind, Mr. Chair. Is, is there a way that we can have something without putting, I don't know, a bunch of conditions on this? Have a respectfully built guardrail that is similar to what's there?
Yes.
So it's not, the community doesn't see some large fence go up that basically says stay out?
Yeah, our intent is never to do a fence, our intent would be to work with the road commission to do something consistent with what they already have, and just extend it further to the east.
Okay.
And as you go further and get down by Crossroads or Camp Oakland, there is nothing, and it drops off so that nobody would ever, you know, try to access the water there.
Thank you.
You're very welcome.
Okay.
Anything?
No.
No? Okay. I think we've reached the point where we need to decide what we want to do, get a motion?
Public hearing.
Public hearing.
Yes, a public, a public hearing.
Public. Public hearing. Public comments.
We need to close a public hearing?
No, we need to, we need to offer the public comment.
I'm sorry, okay.
Definitely done.
Okay, is there any members of the public that would like to comment on what you've seen? Please come up. State your name, your address.
My name is David Treiber, I'm at five 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 Telmore Circle. And my question is that the safety path, I would really like to see it go as far as our driveway and our subdivision so we can get our forty-nine homes out safely into this path. And we are just a little ways past those four homes. Is where our street is.
Nice. These.
That's all I had to say.
It's these right here.
Okay. Are you, uh,
It's going to, safety path will end right here. You have to go right, you have to go through there, cross there a lot.
To get it down to where we can get out of our subdivision, our young people safely into the safety path.
Okay, do you have anybody else?
Okay, do we need to move to close the public hearing?
We do, we need a motion to close the public hearing?
Motion to close the public hearing.
Second.
Okay, are we all in favor of that?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Now, again. do you, are you aware of any communication that may have come in, in the form of a written note or a letter or...
We have not received anything.
Nothing. And as far as you folks go, no one has written a note to you?
No.
No.
Okay, so we can cover that. All right. Does anyone else here on the commission have any comments that you'd like to make?
No.
Nothing more?
Maybe one quick comment. I, and I personally am satisfied that the planners did their job in terms of reviewing the conventional plan that was presented.
Okay. Don, do you have anything more? I see you sort of...
No, I'm...
You're set. Okay.
I'm sorry, thank you.
All right. And with that, we're at a point where unless somebody has something to discuss that we didn't cover yet.
So I'm going to move to grant final site plan approval for PC file number 23-005, known by the project name, the Peninsula of Tolemore, the Village of Tolemore, based on the following findings of facts. One, the residential plan unit development shall provide recognizable and substantial benefits both to the end users of the development and the overall community beyond what could otherwise be realized from conventional development using the standards of the underlying zoning district for this ordinance. Two, the applicant has or will have full ownership or control of all the area to be included in the residential plan unit development such that there is a single person responsible for the full completion of the project. Three, all land included within the residential plan unit development is continuous, contiguous. And four, the residential plan unit development shall provide at least two superior design elements as defined in 14.8(c) Superior Design. Such final site plan approval shall be conditioned upon the applicant completing and submitting the following in its request. One, applicant providing the information required by the township zoning ordinance as set forth in the reports submitted by the township consultants, the township fire department, and the township administration. Two, applicant's submittal of revised plans addresses, addressing stated deficiencies in reports submitted by the township consultants, the township fire department, and township administration. Three, submittal for consideration by the planning commission of: A, approval of the irrevocable record recorded open space preservation instrument by the township board; B, master deeds and bylaws for the two proposed condominium associations establishing ownership, governance, and maintenance obligations, including road maintenance; C, approval of a PUD agreement by the board of trustees; and D, any related easements, road maintenance agreements, and other documents necessary to implement the final site plan. Additionally, the planning commission further approves to amend the 100-foot boundary setback waiver as approved in the preliminary PUD site plan to attached units 46, 47, 48, 49, 52, 53, 54, 55, 56, 57, 58, 59, 60, 61, 62, and detached lots 1, 21, 22, 23, 24, 25, 26, 27, 28, 29, 30, and 31, as shown in the final PUD site plan.
I'll second.
Okay, here we have a second. We'd like to go ahead and call for a vote and we'd like to do it as a roll call, please.
Yes, sir. Durk?
Yes.
Losick?
Yes.
Lincolnship?
Yes.
Wagner?
Yes.
Turner?
Yes.
Austin?
Yes.
Okay, I move to recommend that the township board of trustees accept and approve the declaration of the open space preservation titled Declaration of Easements, Covenants, Conditions, and Restrictions as Required by the Township Zoning Ordinance, Section 6.14d2 and 6.14d3 for the Tolemore North Development as submitted, subject to minor clerkial and legal amendments acceptable to the township attorney.
I'll second.
Okay, we have a second. Call for a vote and make that a roll call, please.
Losick?
Yes.
Wagner?
Yes.
Durk?
Yes.
Austin?
Yes.
Turner?
Yes.
Lincolnship?
Yes.
Okay, I move that the planning commission recommend approval of the safety path waiver request of Trident Crest III LLC to the board of trustees and recommend a waiver of both the obligation to construct a safety path and any additional payment in lieu for the 1,479-foot frontage on the north side of East Drainer Road, east of the four existing homes, and further finding that the record, including the PUD site plan and topographic survey, demonstrates that construction on the north side segment would be impractical due to the steep drop to Tolemore Lake, lack of usable upland, wetland, soil conditions, and existing conservation easement, and that these facts satisfy the authority in ordinance number 117, Section 42-105b, to waive installation or payment where construction is impractical.
I'll second.
Okay, let's do a roll call, please.
Lincolnship?
Yes.
Durk?
Yes.
Losick?
Yes.
Austin?
Yes.
Wagner?
Yes.
Turner?
Yes.
Motion's passed.
Okay. Next item on the agenda is any unfinished business? I don't know that we have any.
Hey, Bob, am I allowed to dismiss myself? Am I allowed to dismiss myself?
No, I guess you can. New, new business? What about any new business?
Teo, do you want me to...
None there? Communications and committee reports. Some of you did the tour of the gravel inspection report?
Thank you very much.
Oh, I did not go on there for...
Thank you. Thank you very much. Appreciate your time.
Thank you.
Oh, gravel inspection. Yeah, I don't know if that's Jim's thing or if that's not mine.
That's okay. Mark and I went with Jack and...
You at least would report it then.
We have good neighbors. They seem to be doing a good job. The coning has made a lot of improvement off of Lake, the Lake Road and landscaping the drive entrance. We did a good inspection we had.
What about the pits that are along these areas up here? Did you go through those or not?
We did not, no. No, we talked about them. I think they store some materials there and access them occasionally.
Those are not active, right?
Right.
Okay. Moving on to the ordinance review committee. Can I talk to Teo?
Yeah, so this is an update both on ORC items, mostly ORC items. So last night, the board heard three requests for zoning text amendments, one being the display and auto convenience markets, essentially the outdoor display of gas stations. They did approve that language as proposed. They considered the text amendment to allow the solar accessory structures, ground-mounted and roof-mounted, and with the exception of a minor amendment to battery placement, they approved those. They denied or they did not accept the 90-day extension for the building official for temporary events. There were concerns there that essentially these temporary permits are not pulled by businesses located in the township or that are permanent in the township and that kind of extending that window of competition for businesses who are brick and mortar here and potentially selling the same things, that's what they felt comfortable with. So right now the ordinance stands at when you pull the temporary outdoor sales permit, you have 90 days. That's, that's that. Then we did talk to the board about ADUs and mixed use. We kind of, you know, the ORC compiled all of our homework on the two topics for the, in front of the board. As it relates to ADUs, at this time, there's, it felt as though there's just too much concern regarding the proper way in which these could be regulated, both from a perspective of writing the standard but then enforcing it, like physically enforcing it from a code perspective. There may be an opportunity in the future to revise it or revisit it. For now, but initially the board's reaction to it was that they're not interested in seeing ordinance language for that right now. Flip side, they were very supportive of mixed use. A few, a few thoughts here and there about where and how, but for the most part, there was a unanimous consent from the board that, you know, they would be happy to review and order a mixed-use ordinance to kind of start working its way through the process of ORC, PC, board. So the ORC met this afternoon, kind of went over those notes, developed a plan. We'll also start looking, our homework over the next month or two is to start looking at the adopted master plan and seeing what initiatives we could take from there for our next annual work plan. So plenty going on.
Mr. Chair?
Any comments?
I have a few questions.
Go ahead.
The mixed-use discussion, did that, does that involve our discussion a few months ago about the four-story? And is, you're nodding, yes, okay.
Yeah, sorry.
So I, no, I'm just, that's okay. I want to make sure I got the right. So was there any discussion about, you know, increasing density as you get closer to the town, to the village and then decreasing density as you get further out or having some, some, some different setbacks and things like that as you're further into the township?
There, yes and no. I'd say yes from the perspective of like there was conversation about lot sizes, like how, like really what could you accomplish on a smaller lot size opposed to a bigger lot size when it comes to density. I wouldn't say that there was necessarily a tiered approach, like fanning out from the village. If anything, there was, I, I think it was jovial in nature, but there was conversation about how you have, you know, at Drainer and 24, three of the four corners contain vacant properties. And like, well, maybe there's an opportunity to do something like that there. And so that distance is kind of a little bit off the beaten path of them. So there wasn't so much about a tiered approach. There was, we did talk about, you know, from a financial standpoint, the difference between three stories and four stories and whether or not the development could work or not work. And there was talk about setbacks, but more from the perspective of just kind of prepping the board that these projects typically have reduced setbacks in their design. That doesn't necessarily mean they have to, but they typically do. And we have to figure out the parking, right? If you try to, if you try to force two parking standards onto one site, it creates problems. But it's not, something that hasn't been solved in the past, so. Yep.
Okay. Mr. Sharp? You have anything on your planning report there to share?
It's all been shared with you. Do you have any questions? Any regards, any of the developments that are going on? Yes?
Yeah.
Get them done.
Okay.
Sounded like a challenge.
Kind of across the street, down a little ways from this one. Well, not anymore, but Tolemore Peninsula, there's a...
Sanctuary Hills.
Pardon me, Sanctuary Hills?
Sanctuary Hills, just to the, to the east of that.
What's the, what's the status of that, do you know?
They are in for their Eagle permits for water and for sewer.
Okay.
So construction likely in the spring.
Is there a delay of some sort or something that happened in their development process that...
Applicants delay.
Okay.
Just going through the process and plan revisions and, you know, taking time to get them back to us. So no delay on our end, just, you know, a...
Oh, no, I didn't mean that, like on your end or on the township's, just curious if...
No, I think that they have...
Selling a property or pulling a plug or what they were...
You know, they have multiple projects going on through the tri-county area and maybe they were putting emphasis on other projects before this one.
Okay.
No.
So they're still full steam ahead?
They are.
Once they get started?
They have some erosion permits. They, again, they've, they've, they're going, they're through the, going through the Eagle and Wellen.
Okay.
Sorry, not the Wellen, but the Eagle, sanitary sewer and water main process right now. Like that's submitted, so again, a few months I would think they'll probably crown.
Okay, cool. Next.
Are they getting anywhere near close to using up their timeframe?
They had, they, they received one extension. And I need to double check, but they're with, we're probably, I mean, this is, I'm not to be quoted on this. I'm looking at the minute maker. But they are probably within a few months of needing to request another one if they don't have the next round of approvals and kind of a shovel in the ground.
And their final site plan, it's in the letter here, it's, the final site plan was approved in December of '23. So I don't know where that puts it in terms of the timeline. I know that that was recently discussed by the building official.
Yeah.
Timelines are being met, but I think they're up against that wall and they may need to ask for an extension.
Yeah, I think they've got to be getting close.
Yeah, I mean, it's always...
Because if it's December, you know, we're, we're almost into December of '25. Typically, they get about, about a year.
Yeah, I did have to double check with the extension processes for final. But yeah, I mean, I know that the building official has had some communication with them about their timeline, so.
Yeah, they were, their process was, if you remember, slightly different. They were on these whole process where they received their preliminary site plan, then they received their final site plan, then they're told to move forward with all of their engineering.
Okay.
The one that was just reviewed tonight was the first one of the new process where it went preliminary, then all the engineering, then you come back for your final. Because we were running into issues like that where Eagle was taking a long time to get issued permits. So by the time they had their final site plan approved, they went through the engineering phases and got all their permits, they were up against the wall already.
Yeah.
So that's one of the other reasons why we, one of the reasons we revise the process.
Any other questions on any developments or anything? Nope?
Nope, that's it. Thank you. Okay, we're down to the agenda item that says adjournment. Can we have anybody make a motion?
Motion to adjourn.
I'll second.
Okay. Are we all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right. You want to do a roll call vote on adjournment?
No.
You don't have to.
Okay, meeting's adjourned.
Thank you.